Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the school committee meeting of Tuesday, August 8th, 2023. I'd like to welcome everyone and call the meeting to order. We just came out of an executive session, so sorry for starting a few minutes late. We're going to start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Also going to read the mission statement of the Wakefield Public Schools. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are competent, lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college career and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. Is anyone here for a public comment, whether in the studio or on Zoom? Doesn't look like it. Okay. Our next item is the consent agenda. We have Stephen Ingles on Zoom with us tonight. Do you have a motion, Stephen?
I think you're muted, Stephen.
Is he muted?
Yeah. Sorry. The school committee approved the minutes of the July 18th, 2023 School Committee Meeting and acceptance of the minutes of the July 25th, 2023 School Committee Policy and Communications Subcommittee Meeting as presented.
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Any opposed? Oh, sorry, we have to do roll call because we have one member on Zoom, so sorry. Take it away, Judy.
Mr. Ingles?
Yes.
Mr. Fontanella?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Piscadlo?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Ms. Colleran?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Martin was not here with us this evening. He'll be back next time. Okay, so that, so we're going budget items. We have Christine Booth Wagner. Hi, Christine. Happy birthday.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening. Can you all hear me?
We can.
Great. So tonight you have financial reports for your review for the month of June and also for the new fiscal year for the month of July. But let's take the month of June first. It's the last month of the fiscal year for fiscal '23. And in your packet, you can see the financial report, broken down, as always, into three categories: personnel services, which is all salaries for the year, which has an ending balance of $65; the contractual services section, which is our vendors, our vendors that we hire to transport students for contractual services for special education, and postage and maintenance for our buildings. That has an ending balance for that category of $834,000. The last section is supplies and materials, which is textbooks, instructional supplies, heat, and also library books and publications. That category was in the negative for fiscal '23 of $529,000. So that leaves us an overall balance of $306,004.6 for fiscal '23. That's the ending balance for the local budget. Also in your packet, you'll see the ending balances for the grants. The only grants that have balances so far for June are SR3, which we have another year, we have until September of '24 to spend on that grant, and our two implementation grants, which we have until the end of August to spend for the new math and ELA curriculum. And the last page of the packet is revolving accounts. And as we've had some lengthy discussions, our revolving accounts are healthy, but they have balances for fiscal '23. And then also Circuit Breaker, which is not a revolving account, but a special revenue account. We are fortunate to be able to carry $1.4 million from fiscal '23 over to '24. This is by law that we are allowed to carry up to one full year of reimbursement to weather any increases to those tuitions that was not budgeted for during the budget process and also if any new students come into the district that was originally part of the budget. So that's for fiscal '23. Does anyone have any questions on that?
I just have one quick question. For then, it looks like the one item that jumped out to me is the instructional supplies. Was like $428,000 over? Was there something that we didn't budget for that we had to buy?
So what happens with school finances, we have bottom-line authority. So schools also, within their lines, have bottom-line authority. So they're allowed to, if they didn't spend all of their contractual services, they're able to move that to a supply line. So we were able to buy extra materials for the end of the year to get us through the summer and hopefully for the first couple of weeks of school. So that's why you'll see some lines have a negative balance, but that's overall, that leaves us with the balance of $306,000. Now, the $300,000 we've also talked about is that we received $300,000 from the town, and we got that at the beginning of June without a lot of time really to encumber that or to have any expenses against that. But we talked about being really good partners with the town and looking at returning this balance to the town. Because for the local budget, for the local appropriation, any money not spent or encumbered at the end of the year, we would go back to the town.
Are we voting on that?
That doesn't apply for grants or revolving accounts. It's just for the local appropriation. So I think also in Doug's section of the agenda tonight, we have this emotion or a possible motion that we talked at the Finance and Facilities Subcommittee about maybe if we looked at maybe if there was any other additional charges that we could come up with. Could we make this available balance even larger? If we moved any charges from the local budget to one of the revolving accounts, what would that look like? And then we talked at the Subcommittee level about what that would be. I don't know, do you want to continue talking about that now or wait till we get to the superintendent's section?
No, I think with your okay, we're actually going to move that up to budget items, so we'll just talk about it all together.
So what we talked about in Subcommittee was that we have agreed as part of the budget process for '24 for next fiscal year, we talked about charging things to the revolving, expenses to the revolving accounts that are appropriate. The only things that we can charge to the revolving account are expenditures that directly come from those revolving account programs. For instance, Wakefield Academy. The revenue was generated from families who pay tuition for their students to go either before or after school or to attend one of our enrichment activities, either during the summer or during the school vacation week. Since COVID, that program has dramatically changed. There was some families during COVID that we had to issue refunds to because they were not able to attend. But we also had to, during the hybrid schedule, as you remember, we dramatically increased participation in that. So we have a higher balance than we would normally have in that program. So in part of the fiscal '24 budget process, we talked about charging custodial services to that account, which we've never done before. The program was never able to absorb those costs before. But we have to have custodial staff during those extra hours. And then we also talked about utility costs for next year. But what we talked about doing, maybe possibly, if the school committee wanted to think about this, was to charge some custodial services for fiscal '23 to that revolving account. And by doing that, we would be moving those expenditures, those salary costs, from the local budget to that revolving account because the fiscal year for '23 is not closed yet. It probably won't be closed until sometime in early September. So we have a little bit of time in order to do this expense transfer. So that would, in essence, bring that $306 up to possibly about $400,000.
To go back to the town, Christine, right?
And that would, in essence, right, anything at the local budget in that available balance column would revert back to the town.
So do we want to wait till September to vote on anything going back to the town?
No, we have to do that before September because once fiscal '23 is closed, we cannot do any more transfers.
So is the ask?
It would have to be done now.
But we only know of the $306,000?
No, plus the additional money from Wakefield Academy.
Oh, so do we have a number?
Ninety, is it $94,000?
So what we did, so what we did is I looked at all the custodial salary costs for the schools that host Wakefield Academy, and I looked at the schedules and roughly 10%, it's between 8% to 10% of those salaries for the year are Wakefield Academy salaries. It's overtime, it's extra cost. So overall, that, it comes out to be about $94,000 and change. So that's why I keep saying $95,000. So I can move, it's an allowable cost, it's appropriate, it's Wakefield Academy-generated. And normally, because Wakefield Academy couldn't absorb those costs, the local budget would absorb that. But I think now, this would be a one-time adjustment. We could make a transfer of those salaries to Wakefield Academy revolving account, which would free up some of that money in the local budget. What that does is we are freeing up money, we are returning it to the town, and we, it's exactly what we told the town we would do. We would look at every account, we would look at every possibility and see what we could afford. So that's what I was going to bring to your attention. We discussed this at the Finance and Facilities Subcommittee. And Stephen, do you want to join in about what that discussion was about?
Yeah, no, I think to your point, I think it was just reflecting back on trying to be good stewards sort of with the financing and finding places where, you know, the town has expressed a need to sort of help in some of these expenditures. And I think between, you know, yourself and Joe, and I know Dustin probably had something to do with it on the food service end, I think you came up with an amount that sort of the budget could absorb. So, yeah, I think it seems responsible. Like, I know you've gone over the numbers a number of times, and I appreciate that. So I think that's just where the conversation landed, was that we, as a group, we were generally comfortable asking the larger committee to sort of take on this transfer.
So in essence, what we're saying is we do this one-time transfer now, but we're also going to be doing these expenditures in '24 because that's what we approved in the budget process. But I don't think we can sustain this moving forward. So I just want that to be clear that these are one-time adjustments in order to close out '23 and '24.
Okay. Stephen, do you have a motion?
I do.
Okay.
So it would be to move that the school committee approved the end-of-year transfers for fiscal year '23 as presented.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? We're going to do a roll call again.
One discussion, real quick, sorry. Christine, can you just point out in the documentation where we see that approximately 400? I see the $306 as the total for the end. Where do we see the additional 95?
I didn't submit it as part of the packet. I haven't, but I didn't give it to Judy to put in your packet. It's a MUNIS report that shows all the salaries. I can email that to all of you.
But essentially, it's coming out of the Wakefield Academy.
I'm sorry, are you asking me what line item?
So is that like a count 72?
I think if I could amend the motion, if you have the specific dollar amount, if you have the report in front of you, I could just make a motion that we approve that amount of transfer back to the town.
So if you're looking on your report?
Yep.
It's the custodial maintenance driver line of the personnel salaries. So it's out of that, you see the expended year-to-date was $1.958 million. That was all custodial for the year. So that's line in MUNIS, which is our financial management system. That's the line it will be coming from.
Yep.
The amount is $94,589.
And then we're adding that to the?
So we'll be doing, I will be doing an expense transfer to the town to the Wakefield Academy revolving account.
Okay.
So the question, Christine, is those two amounts combined would be put together for one motion? Can you please give us a total on that?
So no, there's just one total. So it's one total moving from local budget to Wakefield Academy. So are you asking me what the available budget would be?
No, so we're talking about moving $300 to close out the year. Go ahead, Stephen, I cut you off.
So it's $400,635?
Yes.
Okay.
But can't we leave it as presented or?
Well, yes, yes.
We can, right?
Because, just to be clear, because the town has not closed its books, they're still moving these, we have, we're ending the year with about 433 of POs. They're still moving those forward. There's still work to be done. But for us, for the school department, this will be our last transfer for '23. So I think the motion should just be what the amount we're moving.
Okay. I was just concerned about the specificity.
Thank you.
So you're keeping your motion, yes?
Oh, yes.
All right, great. All right, Judy, could you please do a roll call?
Mr. Ingles?
Yes.
Mr. Fontanella?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Piscadlo?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Ms. Colleran?
Yes.
Thank you. Poor Christine, we're making you talk a lot on your birthday.
That's okay. So the next financial report is the July, which it is our smallest budgetary report. We have a small payroll. It's just for year-on-staff and summer school, and it's just the beginning of expenditures for July. We're still working on setting up our grants. Our entitlement grants for fiscal '24 will not be approved from the state until October. So it's just what the town is doing is moving all of those revolving accounts forward from '23 to '24. So it sounds like, most people say in the summer, not a lot of work is done, but on the financial side, this is when a lot of work is being done because we're really working in two fiscal years simultaneously. So those are the two financial reports. If anyone has any questions on June and July.
Does anyone have any questions? Nope. We don't, thank you.
Perfect. Then we have the payrolls for June and July for your approval. As you'll see, in June, there are actually six payrolls to approve because we have our biweekly reports, our biweekly payrolls to approve. But then the teachers have four summer checks in June.
Stephen, do you have a motion?
Great, yeah, yeah. Move that the school committee approved June fiscal year '23 payroll warrants, number 50, 52A, 52B, 52C, 52D, and 52E as presented.
Second.
A motion's been and seconded. Is there any discussion? No. Roll call, Judy, please.
Mr. Ingles?
Yes.
Mr. Fontanella?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Piscadlo?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Ms. Colleran?
Yes.
Sorry. I was just going to be, the last payroll report is for July.
And secondly, move that the school committee approved July fiscal year '23 payroll warrants, two and four as presented.
Second.
A motion's made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. A roll call vote?
Mr. Ingles?
Yes.
Mr. Fontanella? Mr. Davis? Dr. Piscadlo?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Ms. Colleran?
Yes.
Any gifts?
No gifts.
I think that concludes the birthday girls' presentation. It's time for cake.
Thank you, maybe ice cream.
Bye, Rob, thank you.
Good night, Christine, thank you.
Bye, thank you.
We were going to sing, but I didn't want to embarrass anyone. You don't have to stay with us, you can drop. I mean to kick you up. All right, so now, Dr. Lyons?
Thank you very much. So just some quick comments and updates. This is a very busy week. Wakefield Academy, directed by Estelle Burdick, is closing out, and her team is closing out, part of their summer work. And so this week, the academic component will end on August 10th, Thursday. And so, and the enrichment section and the, the enrichment section and the additional section that they run for Wakefield Academy will close out the next week on the 17th. So it's kind of out an additional week. Also, Bev Alsowitz's program for special education will be closing out on Thursday as well. And so just a little context to the work, Estelle has served just about 300 students in the six weeks that she's been working, six, seven weeks. And so, and in the end of special education, end-of-year or extended-year services, Bev has served 496 students, kind of an all-time high for her program. And she's been remarkable, her and her staff have been remarkable. We've also kind of opened up, and last year and this year, for the second year in a row, we've kept our pre-K students at Doyle, which has been really great for us. We're running kind of two satellites spaces. We're running one at Galvin and one at the Doyle. And so we're really pleased, and so overall, we've served just shy of 800 students this summer in the seven, eight weeks or the seven-plus weeks we've been at this. And so many thanks to students and families that participated and special thanks to all of the faculty and staff that run these programs and give their time so graciously in the summer to work. I know it's a little bit of a side gig, but it's hard work and we really, really appreciate it, really appreciate it. So it's also a really wonderful space for our new graduates and some of our high school students to get a little summer work as well. So we're really pleased to be able to offer these programs and love to see the numbers that are participating. Also, this Thursday evening, just to keep everybody in the loop in the community, is the end-of-season theater event. It's Seussical. That's at 7:00 PM at the Galvin, and that's going to be directed by Elton Nupt. And so that, I think, is going to be a terrific show.
It's free.
Uh, it is, yeah.
Free admission.
Yeah, and so, yeah, and so that's terrific. And so I got to try to get there in between our permanent building committee meeting. And so, but really, please do announce that as well. Yeah, everything. I think Joe and Chip would love that. And so, so just other information, you know, we're also, we had administrative retreat last week, Wednesday and Thursday. So administrators had some work that they prepared for before they came in. And we met, we met Wednesday and Thursday morning. They did some work in between meetings. And so it was great to have all the principals, directors, and assistant principals together to talk about opening of the school year. We really, really focused on the instructional strategy. We've drafted a new, updated instructional strategy. We've also crafted kind of the framework for the new school improvement plans for goal attainment. There's a section on goal attainment in regard to the goals that the principals created last year at the school level. And then there'll be new goals for this year, and school improvement plans will be presented in September. And so more to follow there. But this is also the basis that we use to create our district goals and our district improvement plan. So really pleased to have the administrators back. And, you know, we are one of a few districts in the Middlesex League that have an intact administrative team. I want to say, how long has it been, Kara? Four years?
That it's been completely intact?
Yeah.
I think a little, I think we were saying this is probably the second year in a row that everyone has been here. Yeah, where you'd have one person new here, one person there. But overall, for four years, been pretty intact.
It's a really, really good group. And so, so that's a quick update there. And so you want to talk a little bit about Paris?
About the?
Just the hiring?
Hiring, oh, yes, sure. So we had, one of the things we talked about at our retreat was hiring and just trying to get the word out. So we've recently done some social media posting related to our need for Paris at elementary, middle, and high school, and we've had some really great responses. So we've gotten, that really sparked up even more so. So just always thinking about our hiring practices and how to get the word out. And so I think that's just a tool that we haven't really maybe taken as much advantage of in terms of hiring. So something to think about as we move forward, any new openings that we have, just to get the word out. It's been pretty successful. So our principals are already, you know, we're passing along all of our applicants that we're getting, and they're in the process of hiring now. So hopefully we'll be fully staffed by the start of school.
Yeah, so I think, you know, it's something that we haven't done in the past. But, you know, when we got the word out there and we talked about, you know, the power positions and needs, the returns we got were really promising. So thank you so much for that. Kara, can you talk a little bit about the acceleration?
I can, sure. Yep, so we've been chipping away at this since we found out that we got the grant and planning. We're ready to get started next week. The week of August 14th will be our first week of the program. With the last-minute notice to families, families have been great just trying to do their best to get, you know, their students to come. If they can't come, we say, you know, no worries. We know it's really late notice, and most people start their summer planning in the winter. But it's worked out. We've tried to be as accommodating as possible, even if you can only come a couple of days, or if this week doesn't work, that week might. And so we've been able to secure two, as of this morning, I tallied it up, like 221 students who will attend out of, you know, we have about 270 kindergarteners. So I thought that was pretty great with the late notice that we give to families. That's pretty exciting. It will be a really good opportunity for us. We have an excellent staff, as always. A lot of our kindergarten teachers work, other early childhood educators in the district work. We've also brought in special educators as a new position this year to support the program in different ways with how we can, you know, modify assignments and just create even more accessibility for students. Lots of paraprofessionals also who will be working. And people just have a really strong desire to get in early and get to know the kids and start building relationships. So we're really excited about that. We also have nursing staff both weeks that will be ready. We're starting the process of just getting all the medical information, so we're fully prepared. So it should be another great couple of weeks. We're really excited about it. If you have questions, I can answer them, but, yep.
In terms of hiring for the incoming kindergarten session, did we get all of our kindergarten teachers who were able to attend?
Not all, most, but not all, just because of family commitments. But what we did was, before we even got the grant, we had done an anticipated opening posting. So we had all of our hiring and everything ready to go. But I would say at most of the schools, you know, a lot of the kindergarten teachers can work, but not all, just because.
And then for the ones that aren't there, are the Paris who are going to be in those classes able to fill the role?
We've tried, yeah. So if they apply, which we did have a lot of kindergarten Paris apply as well, so then we would try to place them there as well.
And then in terms of Paris across the district, how many openings are we trying to fill?
Right now, that's a great question. I don't have that number off the top of my head. I want to say elementary had a little bit more. I don't have that exact number. I don't want to give the wrong. But I think at least two to three per level.
Do we have all of our teaching positions filled at this point? Or do we have a few?
And so we have a few positions that are open. We're looking to fill a few classroom positions right now, a few special education positions, and we have some counseling positions, adjustment counseling positions open. And we also have our science, elementary science support positions open. And so we are, our elementary administrators, the principals, the principals, um, are working hard, interviewing. Um, and so I, I'll have an update in the next school committee meeting on exactly where we are in terms of human resources and what positions are open, Kevin.
Great.
Any other questions for Kara? Nope?
Thank you so much, Kara. Um, so in terms of B, into end-of-year transfers, we've already covered that, Christine covered that. Um, and Tim's doing double duty tonight. And before Tim jumps in to talk about facilities, we've invited Brian Block to talk about facilities, specifically the high school. And so, um, their team has been working tirelessly to kind of continue to refine, uh, the plans. We have a standing, we have several standing meetings every single week. Um, and so we've invited Brian tonight just to give a, a quick overview and a snapshot of where we are with, with the high school. Brian, can I turn it over to you?
Sure, thank you, Doug. I'm happy to be here with you all tonight. Um, it means that we've, uh, sort of made another step uh, along our journey together to bring to fruition the new Wakefield Memorial High School. And, um, so I, I wanna share some of that with you. I think first, um, I have a little bit of, um, uh, a, a basic project update, if you will. And hopefully you can see my screen now.
We can, Brian, looks good.
Are you seeing that? Okay, great.
Yeah.
So I ju- just to sort of, uh, put us in context, uh, as, as Doug said, uh, we've, we've been at it for a while here. Um, we started detailed design back in March. Uh, so, uh, that was about a four-month effort that concluded on August 1st with the submission of a design development report to the MSBA. Uh, that report's being reviewed, um, and we expect approval shortly, but we are not waiting. We have dived right into the next phase of, of construction documents. Meanwhile, we've already today, uh, received approval of our resubmission of the, um, uh, special education plan uh, from DESI. So that's a good sign. Um, and so things are, are, are pointing in a good direction, uh, in terms of the progress of the project. We're currently on budget. We had a, a, a cost estimating effort by the construction manager, who is Bond Building, uh, who, who built the Galvin School. Um, they did a cost estimation based on a detailed set of plans and specifications. Uh, and there was a second, uh, outside consultant who did an independent, uh, uh, budget analysis. And the two arrived at a reconciled number, which is in the 220 million, uh, range, uh, register, where, uh, which is, uh, the basic amount that was approved, uh, for the project by the town. Uh, we are still looking to see, uh, where we can, uh, maybe, uh, economize with the project. We're always looking for ways to, to save and make things simpler. Um, so, uh, looking ahead, uh, we will, uh, continue on this construction document, uh, effort, which is, you know, making drawings to be able to turn over to the builder, uh, to start in spring 2024. Uh, so right around the corner. And once that commences, it's roughly a three-year process, uh, which culminates with the school opening in early 2027. Uh, so that's when the move-in will occur. And then demolition of the existing school can occur. Site work will take about a year. So the entire project complete, uh, December 2027. During this process, uh, of, of the most recent, um, detailed design, we've developed a series of these renderings, uh, that we think capture the essence of the project, um, to, as in this view, kind of situate, uh, the location of the new school. A three-story building, uh, set back off of Farm Street, which is in the foreground. And Hemlock is running, uh, along to the right, uh, upper corner. Um, uh, and the building is now sort of defining this, uh, kind of civic space, a campus, if you will. And so our mindset has been about those big three elements. Uh, the school building, which is a primarily brick masonry, uh, materiality with elements of, uh, painted metal, um, and even some wood elements or wood look elements that are, uh, sort of peeking through at, at certain moments. Um, the academic wing is on the right, which is facing toward the south. Uh, so in a favorable orientation in terms of natural daylighting. While on the left, to the left of that central element, which is actually, um, the media center, um, and the, and the main entry to the building with the dining commons below it. Um, on the left is the gym, uh, and then behind that are the district office, WCAT, uh, the auditorium and music suite. So the, the new field you see in the foreground, that's on the site of the existing, uh, high school. And, uh, it will become the new Sean F. Beasley Track and Field. The project will replace, uh, the pro-, um, amount of parking around the building and exceed it by about five or so. But there's an additional bump of parking, uh, sort of across the project with an enlargement of the parking up the hill across from Landrigan Field. So there's a net gain of 45 parking spaces for the whole project. And believe me, parking has been a big topic of conversation. So, um, we, 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 uh, take it very seriously in terms of the implementation. Um, floor plans, I think we've kind of reviewed those before. Uh, really, these are all about adjacencies, um, and creating opportunities for, um, an evolution toward interdisciplinary learning. Um, and creating not only a large-scale zoning of the elements, uh, with the dining commons being the central element, um, here, if you can see the cursor, uh, with main entry, uh, uh, right into it and alongside the main office. The auditorium is, is through the space, but very visible from the front door. And then the gym is up on level two in this plan over here. Uh, so again, the, you know, the, the organization of the project has been done, uh, with the departments and with administration. We've had many meetings and refined and fine-tuned, um, the layouts and gotten them to a point where we think that we have, uh, what should be a very successful, uh, building for long into the future. Moving toward, uh, images at ground level. So imagine, uh, you know, walking through the site, arriving at the main entry, um, gathering around, uh, the protective element of that, um, media center uh, projection in the front of the school. There are elements of wood to give it some warmth. The architecture on the front of the building is primarily vertical in nature, which is, uh, I think gives it a little bit of a, a more organized presence in terms of a, a civic, uh, gesture. But also it responds well to, um, the late-day orientation of the sun. And you can see a little bit of shadowing at the windows from these fin elements, uh, where we wanna really manage the quality of the natural daylight that's getting into the school and also manage, um, our energy budget. Because we want to be ready for net zero uh, when the time comes to install PV panels on the roof um, and to go all-electric with this facility. Moving around to the so-called back, we try to design buildings with as little back as possible because we wanna activate all of it. Um, we're looking at, uh, basically a stack of science rooms, science classrooms, uh, that are represented by these horizontal bands. So that's a, a set of two classrooms and a prep room between them that's stacked on three levels. So efficient, uh, and also responding now to a more horizontal orientation that's advantageous for south-facing sun and getting a high degree of shadowing from these horizontal, uh, Louvert Sunbreaker elements. The star of the show of this view is, is kind of this, uh, amphitheater element built into the hillside, uh, which can be a classroom, it can be a small theater, it can be just sort of a hangup. Um, so, um, again, it's really all about using all the available space, um, to create learning environments, inside and out. Um, you can see up on level two, a terrace that is another spill-out from science rooms, uh, creating outdoor classrooms, observation for earth sciences. There's an outdoor teacher planning space, uh, in the corner here. Uh, and there's access to and from the large group instruction space. So ability to break out to an outdoor terrace and have events. Um, so, uh, a lot of flexibility there as well. Um, the central, uh, outdoor common space, um, is yet another educational environment, um, with adjacency to art rooms, which are over on the left here. So the scene is reinforcing that with, um, the creation of artwork, uh, kind of within the space. Um, the auditorium wall would be available for hanging of larger works. Um, or we actually have, um, screen elements for growing plants onto the wall so that it becomes a, a real, uh, connective element in terms of, um, bringing folks in a bit closer proximity to nature, yet in a protected environment. The space beyond, uh, through the glass is the dining commons. Uh, so again, really kind of connecting all the way through that central space as, uh, a highly civic and highly, um, uh, connective element in terms of the program. Moving inside to the dining commons. So this is that central connector, uh, space. Um, two different views. On the right, we're at the ground, uh, first floor at eye level. Um, we can see a learning stair. We can see elements of wood that enrich and kind of give warmth to the space. We can see back out to that courtyard, uh, element, um, sort of beyond the stair, in the middle of the view. Then we can start to see into the hallway environment to the classrooms. The palette is somewhat simple. I think in the next, uh, phase of design, it becomes really exciting in terms of representing the culture of the school with, uh, graphic elements that would go onto walls and even into floors. Um, the epoxy terrazzo material that we've used on the floor here, represented here, um, can have inlays into it, um, which we've done in many schools, whether it's a school seal or a logo or, uh, whatever, um, of the, you know, school really wants to envision. And there's been quite a bit of, um, uh, information gathering, which includes surveys that have informed our progress so far on, on at least starting to think about some of those elements. The media center, um, is, um, a real, uh, sort of hub for project-based learning, uh, for research, um, for study, for reading, um, uh, or even quietly listening to music. Uh, the west-facing element of, of this room, and we can see facing it on the right-hand view, looking out over the new Landrigan, oh, sorry, uh, Beasley, Beasley Oval, um, toward Farm Street, you can see the panorama that's created. Um, however, there is also strong low sun in the space. So we've created a, a shading element and weaving sort of a tapestry into the glass uh, that recalls some of the notion of, uh, the rattan industry that was kind of the foundation of Wakefield at the very beginning, when we, we first put down pen and paper. Uh, that was one of our inspirations. Um, a bright, airy, uh, open, uh, uh, connected to the outside environment is really what we're looking for. Um, because wellness is kind of at the foundation of how we design, uh, knowing that, uh, without that base, it's really difficult to have any substantive learning. Uh, this image is a capture of kind of an in-between space, which is a central corridor, uh, and stairwell within the academic wing, uh, that has the large group instruction spaced to the left. Uh, we're bringing in daylight, uh, from the top of the stair and trying to bring it and, and let it filter all the way down into the center of the school. Um, and meanwhile, creating elements, uh, of countertop uh, and seating in areas where, uh, you know, we wanna try to make best advantage of, um, you know, opportunities for, for that, um, uh, uh, opportunity for, for learning. The last image is the auditorium. And, um, we selected an after-school view, uh, where there's a small troop, uh, planning and preparing. Um, and, uh, you know, we feel that the room itself is gonna be exciting. Uh, it will also be extremely high-performance in terms of, uh, the playing of music, um, theater production, uh, and all of the teaching and learning that you could imagine. So, um, very excited to share all of that with you. Uh, we'll be posting this onto the project website. Um, and so if there are any questions, feel free to reach out.
It's Brian, right?
Questions from the group?
Does anyone have any, it's Brian, right?
Yes.
Does anyone have questions for Brian? I'm just curious, do you know how, how many, how many the auditorium will seat?
Yes, it's 667.
Wow. Do you know what, do you know what the Galvin seats? Anyone?
Um, a similar number.
Similar?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah. Brian, thank you so much. I love...
Yeah, thank you.
Um, wait, um, Brian, I had a question. Sorry, uh...
Forgot about you, sorry.
That's okay. Um, Brian, I'm curious about, you talked, uh, you spoke for a moment about how there are still continuing surveys, um, seeking sort of community input in various stages. Um, I'm wondering, I think maybe, I, I felt like that was more active sort of before the, the town vote on, on financing the project. Um, and I know we're moving through the project. I just, I'm curious if you can talk a little bit about, um, where those, um, where are those opportunities where members of the community can sort of provide feedback on the project? Where do, because I know we're gonna hit a point where it becomes more rigid, right? So...
Sure.
How many more opportunities do we have for people to sort of have input on this, this large project?
Right, I, it, great question. Um, so I, I would say that, you know, the architecture, the, the fixed elements that we've, we've shown here are set, right? So the design is established. We're now in the process of documenting how that gets built so that the contractors can take that and actually build the building. Uh, where we've done surveys, and we're basically complete with, with sending those out and getting the responses, was more for the school community, for students especially, um, to be able to give us, uh, you know, a lot of individual feedback in terms of the values they hold dear, the places in Wakefield that are meaningful to them, um, you know, activities that they love to do. So that then our environmental graphics team can take those. And when I say environmental graphics, are, uh, that part of our design team will create elements that can be applied to walls. elements that can be applied to walls. In some cases, you know, we create mosaics out of tile, or as I mentioned, the terrazzo elements in the floor. Those are opportunities now for some of that cultural content to be integrated into and applied to the imagery that you're seeing. So, these images, I would say, are about 95% complete. Once we have the environmental graphics more established and based on that feedback, we'll integrate those elements into these views as well, so they're really a complete picture of what we expect to see for the final product. So, there'll be a little more color and a little bit more sort of, maybe even text or iconography.
Okay. I would just say, I think, you know, while this is first and foremost our high school and does serve those student needs, I think a portion of it, a fair portion, we're also using as community space. And I think you mentioned this as well, you know, whether it's, we've seen the theater aspect or the gym, and some, we've even talked about sort of some maker spaces. And so, in that regard, I would almost just think about casting a slightly wider net, just to sort of engage people on a level. Because this is, this is a community resource, right? It is part of Wakefield Public Schools, but it is a community resource. And I think it's important to sort of keep that as part of the conversation.
Absolutely. Great. Point taken. We typically do incorporate that aspect when we get to the stage of actually designing the material. And we always have administration to help guide us with some of those elements. There are also elements within the current school that will be salvaged and reopened over. So, there's really a continuity of those elements, whether they're memorial elements or they're, again, more sort of cultural elements. But we will definitely think about the wider community.
That's great. And just one other question would be, with the gymnasium being up on the second floor, I know that, you know, whether it's a basketball game or whatever else is going on there, people might have, might be coming to that event that have some mobility issues. And I love the staircase. Is there proximity of elevators? Is there, you know, volume or, you know?
There is. So, we have two elevators in the project, both connected to the dining commons space.
Yep.
So, the way up the stairs, this way.
Yep.
There's one elevator here and one elevator over here. So, from either side, those both go to Level 2. It's more likely that the one adjacent to the auditorium would be the one to go up into the gym. So, that arrives right here in the Level 2 plan, and then the entry into the gym is right there across from it.
Great. Okay. Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Brian. Much appreciated. Really appreciate the renderings. I love that, the time that you spend and the seasons that you put in and the, you know, the shading and the, it's just terrific. It's just really gives us a very good sense of what we're going to be looking at. So, thank you so much.
Very glad to hear that. It's a lot of fun. Thank you.
We'll see you soon.
Good night.
So, next up, we're going to invite Tim up to give an update, a facilities update on work that's happening in the summer, and also some work that we started this year and kind of are still working on in regard to just some safety aspects for schools.
Okay. I have a slide deck.
Ryan, can we get the slide deck for Tim?
Thank you. Much appreciated. So, it's behind you, Tim, so we can see it.
You can see it?
Yeah.
As long as you can see it. I've got it in front of me.
You're on page one.
I just want to make sure that, all right, I'm a construction guy. I don't do, I don't do these slide shows very often. Good evening, everybody. Nice to see you all. So, we'll start with some of the summer projects that we're working on. We'll start with the Woodville. This was a capital project, the new gym floor. This wrapped up the end of last week. It really looks beautiful. We were able to work with not only the gym teacher, but the principal of the school. And you can see in this closest to us, the corner there, we've put four square in each corner of the gym, so we won't be using tape and things of that nature and kind of wearing that floor out too quickly. So, hopefully, we'll have some longevity here and really pleased with the way that came out. We started the summer with a full cleaning of all the ductwork in the building as well. That's something that we're working on across the district. The plan is at this point to do two buildings every summer, because it's costly work, but it's certainly necessary and something we want to keep up with. Moving on to the high school. If you're familiar with the mailroom in the front corridor of the school, sort of the admin hallway, Ms. McLeod came up with the idea of sealing one side off so that you can convert that to an office space. It's still in progress. We have some paint work and a little bit of soundproofing to do, but it's definitely a value add with some extra office space. We certainly need it, so. And then, we added a sink to an art room in the basement. After years of working with clay, some of the drains have become unusable. And rather than fully excavate the floor and try to reestablish those drains, we've jumped off of other existing working sinks to get us through the next couple of years of us using the building. So, I think that's something that the art department's really going to be excited about. I know, for whatever reason, I'm excited about it. Moving on to the Walton. So, this is another capital project. We've been working together with Dennis Fazio and his team on the DPW Parks and Forestry Department. They have come through and completely demolished the existing playground structure. They had some contractors come through. You can see on the right-hand side picture, there was a large concrete pad there as well, so that had to be removed. And by the end of this week, we're looking at being scheduled to start construction of the new playground. So, we've kind of realigned, it's not going to be in the exact existing placement as it was. We've worked closely both with the teachers at Walton and with the PTO, and we're very thankful for all their input. And we've kind of reinvented how we're going to use that space and make it, maximize it so that it works for everybody in the building. At Doll Bear, we are doing that full cleaning of the ductwork. At Doll Bear as well, this week, it's happening now. We have done multiple desk replacements in full classrooms. We worked with TJ on that, made sure that we had, you know, enough to go around in each classroom, so we're not just replacing some desks so that everything is uniform. Sort of a big project which you wouldn't really consider was the bookshelf hardware. We were starting to have issues where the weight of the books was sort of breaking down the hardware there. So, hundreds and hundreds of L brackets have gone in. That's, it was a big time commitment, but it was certainly something I think that is going to help the library function much better. I think she's going to be a lot more comfortable with putting those books back on the shelves. At Galvin, this was good. We brought, Megan Webb brought in some new furniture for the learning commons. The stuff that was there was tired and it was time for a full replacement, so that's all been delivered and we've got that rolled out. You kind of see in the picture, it's, we've still got it covered because it's so nice looking. And we've got so many people in that building still right now. We don't want to uncover anything prematurely. So, once summer school wraps up, we're going to get everything unwrapped and queued up in its proper placement. Another project, we've been working with Automated Building Systems, who is our contractor who manages the HVAC systems. And as you may have heard, we've had some sporadic issues with HVAC in the Galvin, which we've been working with them on. We have a full assessment and reconfiguration of the HVAC systems going over the coming week. So, I heard this morning that the materials that we've ordered that need to be installed are in stock, and they're going to be sending us some technicians. I think we should see a completely different school come September when it comes to HVAC systems. So, we're really hopeful and excited about that. We want, of course, everybody to be comfortable, so. Moving on to the Doyle. Improvements continue at the Doyle. We've got, the DPW was helpful and brought in some pavement for us. We had some paving done on the right-hand side picture. You can, if you can see along the side of the building, there used to be some grass plots that were sort of in trouble. And so, what we've done is brought the asphalt close to the building. It's going to help us with some drainage issues that we're having in that area. And then, on the other side of the building, you see the small play area out front. We had about a two-and-a-half-foot fence. And with some of the students' being escape risks during playtime, they were able to kind of scale that fence. And the fence was tired. So, it was good timing. We worked with Dennis Fazio on the Parks Department. He brought in a contractor for us and got us a nice five-foot fence. So, I think that's going to be a major improvement at Doyle. Moving on to safety. This year, we were fortunate enough to bring in the Ed Davis Company, who was a recommended vendor from Desi. And they were able to go through and comb through every single one of our buildings in the district and do a full risk assessment. And this is something in the industry that is widely encouraged, to bring in a third party and get that assessment done. If anybody has any specific questions in regards to the results of those assessments, I'd be happy to have offline conversations with you about that. What I can say is that we're doing a lot of things right. I think that we're proud of a lot of the systems that we have in place and how we're working with that. We'll continue always to make improvements. I think that security is the most important thing that we do when it comes to students and staff and faculty. So, we'll continue to make improvements as we do in every area of what we do. But we've reviewed camera systems, access controls, and all our security protocols. So, and, you know, this is something that we talk frequently about in Crisis Team and across the board. So, we're excited to continue to make upgrades, which we've begun working with some vendors to see what we can do, what can we afford, what can be done to be better than we are today and continue that moving forward. So, we're really thankful to have had them come through, and we're continuing to work with them on their suggestions and how we best move forward. Moving on, as I mentioned, with Crisis Team, we have, in working with Tom Walsh, the town's Emergency Management Director, who has really been a great person to work with, really a subject matter expert on this sort of thing, he's been involved in multiple communities and rolling out similar quick reference guides. So, Tom and I are actually traveling to Burlington this Thursday to meet with the printer to kind of give them, you know, our specifications of how we want this to look, and they're going to give us a, some examples of other prints that they've done. The end game is that this is going to be a book that's accessible to everybody in every classroom across the district. So, no matter who's in that room, you'll be able to look at the front of that book, flip to a tab, and have an exact roadmap of what you need to do to respond to each crisis. So, it doesn't matter if it's a seasoned teacher, a student, if there's no, you know, there's no adult in the room at the time, somebody will be able to go right to that book and say, "These are the things that I need to do to respond appropriately." And I just wanted to mention as part of our work and our commitment to security here in Wakefield, I was able to attend the National Student Safety and Security Conference this summer in New York City. And what that was basically was working with a lot of folks across the country who have experienced major emergencies in their school systems, how they responded, what their best practices were, and how that translates. How can we learn from that and put the right protocols in place in our school system so that if we are ever faced with any of these emergencies, that we are able to respond appropriately and have, you know, the best possible outcomes? That's it for me. If anybody else, anybody has any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Go ahead, Kevin.
So, Tim, I think in a lot of districts, you have a facilities department, you've got your teacher department, you've got your administration. And what I find really impressive about like that presentation and what you presented at the facility subcommittee meeting, is that it really seems that all the different departments in Wakefield really seem to work together and have really good communication. Like, the fact that you did the Woodville gym floor, and it seems that you talked with the teachers about, "This is where we need the markings, so we're not constantly putting tape on the floor." Now, it sounds so little, it sounds so small, but I think that, I think it's an assumption that that's how like all districts work, and I don't think it is. I think that the communication that you had, and also we have the rec department, too.
Sure.
Yeah, I think that, you know, it's pretty commendable. And I think it's, yeah, great job.
Yeah, thank you very much. I'm very thankful to, you know, we've got great relationships across the board through town, and, you know, we work closely with IT, with, you know, the DPW. And we just try to include everybody and make sure that we have everybody's opinion. I certainly don't have all the answers, right? So, and I think I try to follow Doug's lead and just lean on folks who have the right information and make sure that we're doing the right things at the right times, and so, thank you for that.
Go ahead, Pete.
Tim, for the Crisis Quick Reference Guide, is that also in electronic, will it also be in electronic format, or is there a reason?
Absolutely.
I didn't know if there was some sensitivity and there's some reason why it wouldn't be.
Of course. Yeah, so that will be available to district staff, absolutely, absolutely. And so, and what our plan is to kind of mount a, like a...
QR code?
No, like, just like a little shelf so that somebody be able to grab that book, you know, if, you know, you're in a rush, you grab onto it and flip right to the page that you need to, you know, within a very short amount of time.
It's basically, it's an emergency response plan, right? Is that what it's called?
Essentially, it's a Crisis Quick Reference Guide.
Okay.
Yeah, so, you know, we certainly have our, you know, emergency protocols.
You guys had like the more intense version.
Sure. This is the brief.
This is the brief that people in the classroom need to know.
Right.
Okay, great. And then, I have one quick question, too. How often is that safety assessment done? I'm sorry if you said it, I might have missed it.
The external, the third party?
Yeah, the third party.
It's not something that's done on a regular basis. I think it's something that, you know, we have some really good information for right now, and it may be something that we repeat in the future.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not familiar with, you know, when the last time a risk assessment was done.
So, it hasn't been done by a third party?
Okay.
It's been done internally and then kind of pieced together. But this is the first time, so I'm starting my ninth year, this is the first time that we've had a third-party vendor, right, come out and do this. And so, we're looking at safety differently, right? We're looking at it, you know, yes, Tim is the director of facilities, but he's also co-chairs our Crisis Team, okay, and is also going to be doing some more work in our upcoming meeting. We're going to have the RSOs and the Chief of Police here to talk about the new school safety guide that was put out in terms of best practices from the Police Chiefs Association, and just talk about where we are in terms of school safety and from their perspective. And so, but what we're trying to do, Kevin, as you pointed this out very nicely, is we're trying to really demonstrate a unified front, and we're trying to make the work that we're doing common among the agencies in town or all of the providers in town. And so, that's kind of where we are, but that's the big picture. And you'll hear more about Capital when we get together and in terms of the additional work that's been done in facilities through Capital, there'll be an update coming on that. And teachers have had a hand in that as well, Kevin, which, to be honest, we're thrilled about, right? To walk the grounds with a teacher to say, "This is, you know, we were over at Walton, and one of the teachers surveyed all the other teachers, and they had a working drawing of exactly what the expectation, what their expectation was." So, there, we're trying to meet that expectation.
It's fantastic. And it pretty much has dictated exactly how we're going to lay that out, because there was some really wonderful ideas that they came up with. So, we're so thankful for all that.
But just one more note about safety in terms of upcoming reporting. We're also taking a look at cybersecurity as well. And so, that's something that Jeff Liner is going to be reporting about when he gives an update on the technology plan, likely in the second meeting September, first meeting in October. So, more to follow there.
Stephen, we can't see you anymore. I didn't know if you had any questions or comments.
Yeah, no, I had both. I think they, I would just echo sort of what everyone had sort of said in terms of partnerships, sort of what's existing. Tim, it's not lost on me that it takes, it is a partnership. It takes people on both sides of the table, and it's so evident that we're lucky enough to have people like yourself and Dennis and TJ, you know, educators, administrators, just working collaboratively. And I just, I just said a thank you to sort of setting that environment and that standard and making it just sort of common practice. It's not everywhere, and you all sort of foster that. For us, is big, and it just, it shouldn't, it shouldn't just be glossed over. It should be emphasized. So, thank you for that. And then, Doug had mentioned with the safety report that the RSOs and the chief were going to come in and have a conversation. That's what I was curious of, is if we're sharing that, the third-party, the Ed Davis report with the chief. With the, is that like the Ed Davis?
That's the Ed Davis. Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, okay.
Correct.
So, yeah, that was it. So, thank you for the collaboration and all the work that went into it. It's very thoughtful.
Truly my pleasure. Thank you.
If you have a related question, go ahead.
I can switch topics.
Okay. Go ahead.
I had a couple of questions. The Walton grass, have we made any progress in that?
So, that's all going to be tied together with this playground project. I think the realignment of where we're going to have the playground space is going to encroach a little bit on the grass where we were having an issue. There's been a lot of talk on how we move forward with that grass. I think... I think depending on what we go with for materials, if it were to be, you know, planted grass again, what we'd have to do is take some time to block that section off so that we're able to establish real rooted, healthy grass so that it can be played on and, and not just trampled as it has been in the past. So, that, that's on the drawing board still. We're, we're working with DPW to, to establish a, a best way forward there and we'll have more info to bring to you. What we've done with the, the playground space and what we got a lot of feedback about from the teachers was they wanted more blocktop. They wanted an area where they could line the students up safely and, and bring them into the building without dragging a ton of dirt into the building as well. They found themselves playing in the drop-off circle at, at, at times, which obviously is not ideal. So, we're going to pave a, a larger space than was existing before, which will open up a lot of opportunities maintenance-wise for plowing and, and things of that nature. So, it'll just make the building function a lot better. But we're not at the end on the decision about what we're doing exactly with the grass, but I can say that it's a smaller space, a more manageable, manageable space now. So, I'll have more to, more information to bring to you on that in the future.
Right. And then in terms of the Ed Davis company who came out, were we able to get any grant to help with that or do we have to fund that out of our own budget?
Um, that was funded out of, out of the local budget.
Okay.
Yep. And so, I, I'm not sure that we, so because they referred to us through the department and because they were doing such large amounts of, of work, I don't know. I, I think we did get a, a rate that was pretty competitive, yeah.
Yeah, because I can imagine they're not cheap to hire.
No.
Just a question, Tim, about, you talked about the HVAC system at Galvin and I think I still consider a brand-new school and I realize it's not. So, and knowing literally nothing about HVAC other than how to turn on heat in the house, you can keep it really simple. Is the issues that were there pretty common for the age of the building or, I'm just thinking this, we're now looking at a new building being built, the fact that there's HVAC problems in the building as it is? Like any, any commentary about that?
Yeah, I think some of what we've run into is, is issues with some of the equipment that was installed originally. You know, 10 years go by and some of the stuff is outdated and, and they're, you know, they, I believe it's ACM versus ECM is some of the equipment, the computer equipment that runs our HVAC at the Galvin in the background. And so, some of that is just going to be updated. You know, we've had some issues, we've had, we've lost some compressors, we've, we've lost a few motors here and there and those things have been replaced. I think we have, it's an, it's an interesting issue because we have some building, some areas are, areas of the, of the building, the classrooms are, are too cold, but sometimes it has a lot to do with personal preference. But, you know, I realize that there are some, are some real issues right now with controlling those temperatures. And I think with a pretty, with a few pretty simple fixes that I think are just due to aging, a little bit of aging equipment, we'll be able to control it pretty good.
So, the, the big challenge for us in this building, and, and we've had this, this challenge over time with, with a couple of buildings, is, is, you know, the controls are really the issue. The equipment works, but the controls are, are a challenge and to get someone to work on controls reliably is as big a difficulty as it is to make the controls work well, right? And so, so that's been a challenge for us. And so, I think Tim has worked with, with Joe and DPW and, and I think we have a new kind of vendor for, for HVAC controls, which I think is going to help us with the kind of the, the temperature swings. But it's, it's unfortunately something that we, I, from my perspective, I don't think we should be seeing the swings in temperatures that we're seeing or the difficulties with controls that we're seeing right now.
Agreed 100%.
Yeah, it just kind of jumped out at me, so, thank you. Thanks, I echo what everyone else said. It was a great presentation, great work. I love the look of a gym like that.
It looks so good.
Look forward to the new year. Thanks for all you do.
My pleasure. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Do you have something else, Kevin?
No.
Thank you so much, Tim. Really appreciate you. Um, and, and the last item on my agenda is just an update in regard to the health and wellness process. We spoke a little bit about that in our last meeting and I think we, we went really quick in the last meeting, you know? Where, you know, where do we align, where do we not align and, and so, and, and what it, what's new and what's challenging and, and so, and just kind of giving you a sense of, of where the department is, right? And so, you know, so this work started with the department back in 18. And so, and with COVID, they're just getting this document out now. So, I shared an email with the, the committee earlier today, which had a link to the webpage at DAD Desi. And, and what's interesting to look at on that webpage is about halfway down the page, they give a timeline in terms of how they're going to collect feedback and then when they're going to disseminate the new updated document. The, the dissemination and the implementation of the feedback, that box is blank, right? And so, so we do know that they're taking feedback up until August 28th, okay? And so, there's several ways to give feedback. You can contact via email, the, the two persons that are, are heading up this work at the Department of Ed, administrators, and anyone else also has an opportunity to go on and provide feedback via an online survey. And so, we, we've given feedback via the online survey. We have a call scheduled to talk to, to the two persons at the department that are heading up this work, just to hear a little bit more about the breakdown in regard to, so, they break down practices and standards by grade span. The grade spans are pre-K 2, 3, 5, 6, 8, and 9, 12. And so, one of the big questions that not only I have, but all superintendents have and curriculum coordinators and assistant superintendents are, you know, within these grade spans technically, what, with the design of the new framework, how much time is, how much time is, is, is needed to teach the standards as they are presented? And so, that's a big question for me. And so, and I know it sounds technical, but, you know, I, I think we're just looking to connect with the department and just hear what other questions they might be getting that we might not be considering. But when these are, we've given feedback, when the feedback is taken and when these frameworks are given back to us, that's when the work really starts for us at the district level. So, in regard to process and the update is, you know, it's like any other curriculum area that will be kind of worked into a curriculum review cycle. We will kind of turn this over to the Director of Health and Wellness, Brendan Kent. Brennan will work with Kara and, and they will map out, you know, a plan for what is the timeline, what will the review look like? And they'll, we'll do literally a crosswalk. And so, and you'll see in, in the document, they include some information in regard to, they call it a crosswalk, a compare, a comparison alignment side by side. So, this is new, this is existing or what is updated. And so, and, and then we'll, we'll look at our current schedules, think about what is needed for curriculum materials, what training personnel will need to, to kind of teach the new standards. And then we will come and summarize that work to school committee and make a proposal in regard to new curriculum materials that we'll be purchasing through the regular budget. But that's, that's a very quick update. Happy to answer your question, Kevin.
Does the state want this new curriculum to be enacted in this school year or are they assuming it to be enacted at the beginning of the following school year?
So, it's, it's my working theory that it's at the beginning of the next school year, right? Because of where we are. If they're accepting their final recommendations on a draft...
Just want to make, just want to make sure.
Beginning of September, this is a year out.
Gotcha.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So, and it also depends when they're going to finalize the doc and get that to us.
Yeah.
Because it's going to take about a year to review the curriculum, right? So, that's where we're at. Other questions? Thank you so much. That's it for me.
Okay, so now let's go to the chair. So, I do have a question and I meant to ask Brian. The reason I asked you to have an update from SMMA is to see when we would be losing the field. Do you know?
I do.
Okay.
April, and, and April, they're going to put a construction fence around the Beasley Oval.
So, so our track program and anyone that uses the field will be outsourced?
Correct.
Or are we going to open Landrigan up?
So, Landrigan has, is always in play.
Right.
So, Landrigan is always in play. And so, yes, Landrigan's in play, but in regard to outsourcing, Brendan Kent will be giving an, an update in terms of, by phase. So, when this is happening, these are the teams that are impacted, this is what we're going to do about it. So, we're also going to have some impact to the softball field because there is going to be a culvert, there's a culvert that runs parallel with the track and then goes out the left field of the soft, the new softball field, the Barnard Field. And so, what is going to need to happen is they're going to need to open the ground in that area and so, softball will be impacted, but they'll put the field back together and...
But not tennis?
And so, not tennis at this time.
Okay, but we'll have Brendan in.
We'll have Brendan in, yeah.
So, the fall is good.
So, the fall is good.
All right, great.
The fall is good, yeah.
The only other update I have is the school committee will be having their summer retreat on Tuesday, August 22nd, which is in two weeks, and that's from 4:00 to 7:00. It's an open meeting, it will be posted, anyone's welcome to attend. And then we'll have a, a small agenda, school committee meeting immediately following. So, that's all I have. We'll go to subcommittee reports, finance. Oh, Tom isn't present. Can anyone give an update if there was a finance, actually, we talked a lot already, but does anyone have, other than the budget transfer, an update on finance and facilities?
I would, I would just say that finance and facilities pretty much encapsulated everything that Christine spoke of and everything that's... Probably a, a broader presentation than even the subcommittee got. So, I, yeah, definitely covered.
Is there any way we can get Stephen back on the screen?
I can see...
Hi!
We're back.
Hello! We couldn't see you.
We couldn't see you.
But you're back now. And you're next, labor and personnel.
Yeah, so labor and personnel, we just continue with negotiations with our WAA, UDA members, teacher negotiations, those are going well. You know, just working to sort of close out a contract and, you know, thankful for everyone that, that comes to the table and, and comes with good ideas. In subcommittee discussion, aside from sort of negotiation, talk about sort of collaborating, one other thing that has come up is we were approached by the WAA, the Wakefield Administrators' Association, that we have a couple of special education coordinators that would like to join their unit. And so, we're, we're talking now about, about that proposal and, and there'll be more to follow on that.
Thank you. Student Services, Ailee.
Yes, we met yesterday officially and we discussed our goals and everything for this coming year and we're really excited. Can I share with someone about our goals?
Yes, okay.
Okay, great. I'm like, I never know what can we share. Okay, so some of the, two of the goals, we figured we'd focus on, on two pretty big lofty goals, I think. One is school start times, which is going to be exciting and we're going to do some research and dig into that. And then we are going to really focus on what is happening within the schools and where help is needed. How do I, how am I putting this? We're helping, we're going to be surveying the, the staff and the teachers and like where help is needed.
Counseling.
What'd you say?
Counseling.
For counseling, yes. And like caseloads and, and looking at all of that and how to best support our students. So, those are the two areas we're going to be focusing on, lots of research involved, lots of surveys involved and data, but that's going to really move forward the goals for next year and budget.
Thank you. Policy and Communications, Kevin?
Yeah, in our last Policy Communications Subcommittee meeting, we had a really great discussion. I thought it was a very productive conversation with Ms. Margolis, a teacher at our high school, about our religious holiday policy. And we had a great conversation and really we're talking about how we can improve the communication of that policy to all the teachers in our district and also all the stakeholders in our community. So, we really, really talked about education and communication of this policy as a really, this is a very strong priority, especially at the, as, at the beginning of the school year, as it's coming so quickly. We also discussed, we have a code of conduct policy that we are currently reviewing and also we are going to, in the future, be discussing our, our cell phone policy. And they want to, they just want to review that policy and see if we can tweak or improve it or, you know, or just work on particulars about that policy. Okay. We also have a motion because we do have a policy 217 about public participation and so I think I'll make the motion so we can discuss and then vote. So, can I make the motion?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I'll move that the school committee approved policy 217, public participation as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion that's made and seconded and is there any discussion? I won't forget this week. Yes, go ahead.
Okay. So, just, just for everyone to know, this policy regards public participation at school committee meetings. And there was a state Supreme Court case that happened this year that basically changed the way that, not changed the way, but basically looked at people's freedom of speech when they were having public comment at school committee meetings. And this also applies to municipal meetings. So, you know, Town Council in Wakefield has, has already addressed this, but we do have to address this within our policy. So, Pete Davis did a lot of work, thank you very much, Pete, on our committee to revise this policy. And so, what you see here in our, in the very end of our packet is the revised policy. So, this is actually the policy with the revisions that Pete has put in. Pete, would you like to make any comments?
I'll just give some credit to Stephen Ingles as well. So, Stephen did a first draft of edits and then I, I did a second on top of that. And as you said, I think the main area of focus was just to ensure that we weren't telling people of things they weren't allowed to, to talk about. The only real off-topic discussion involves personal complaints about personnel, which is just not okay to talk about in an open meeting. Other than that, it's kind of fair game for if someone wants to show up, what they can
I did want to make, assuming I'm not in violation of Robert's Rules of Order, I, I wanted to make a motion to make an amendment on one of the clauses in this, in this motion.
Do, does anyone else have any comments before we make the amendment?
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Second.
Thank you for your time.
Wait, he didn't make the amendment.
They just made a motion to have... Yeah, so the amendment, the amendment would be to add to clause number nine, which is the very end of the policy. So, it reads, "The school committee will not engage in dialogue, but will give any remarks appropriate consideration." My amendment would be to add one more sentence to the end of that, which would state, "The school committee may address points of clarification as needed." The reason why I would like to put this amendment on the floor is there, I, I think it is very, very appropriate for the school committee not to engage in dialogue, just to be clear, with, with the public when they're making comments. But if a comment was made where there was some question of the meaning of the comment, whether it was, where someone, where someone from the public said something that someone on the school committee truly did not understand what the meaning of that comment was, I wanted to make sure that a member of the school committee would be able to just clarify what the person meant in that statement. And this does not mean to, you know, debate or to discuss with the person for the public, but just to make sure that everyone, that the person on the school committee or hopefully everyone on the school committee would know what was actually stated, what the meaning was, what the meaning of the comment was. So... Um, so again, the amendment would add the sentence, "The school committee may address points of clarification, comma, as needed."
Could I ask a a question about that?
Yes.
Sure.
Um, I just, in the time that sort of, I've I've been fortunate to sit on the committee. I've seen times where the chair has sought fit to engage in dialogue. It's it's been m- minor, it's been like two, maybe three times. Um, but it seemed that it was um warranted in the moment. Um, and and it wasn't outlier. I'm just struck by the that, the part where it says, "Will not engage in dialogue." I I wonder if we can word that in such a way that that at the chair's discretion, sort of. And it wasn't the whole school committee, that it was literally the chair commented back on something that was impactful. And and it wasn't, it wasn't necessarily just for clarification. It was, there were a couple different um, different reasons. They were sort of high temperature topics. Um, and I think sort of just a very small dialogue was kind of warranted in the moment. Um, and so I'm wondering if we can ma- may not in, may not engage? Um, yeah, I I'm ju- I want, I wonder if we could just pull out the rigidity a little bit? Just make it so that in the normal course of business, we don't engage. Um, but leave a slight crack that at the chair's discretion. Um, yeah, so.
So is that part, but isn't that covered in the but? It says it will not, so to me, it's reading like, cause I I I have the same question as you, Stephen. It was rigid, so will not engage, that's our common practice. We're not going to engage, but
Yeah.
will give any remarks appropriate consideration. So those, to me, mean like the one-off times, like.
That to, that to me is just saying that we're gonna consider whatever they say, whatever their complaint is. We'll consider it and maybe bring it to the table later.
Oh, okay.
I don't think it has anything to do with speaking back, but I do agree with you, Stephen, cause I do think that there are some instances where, you know, some, a really emotional topic or something comes up and, you know, it's so strange to just be like, "Thank you." And not say anything more to engage, so I just, I I I agree with you there. I, yeah.
Yeah.
Kevin, sorry.
Oh, no. Um, yeah, I I definitely agree. I think that, like, reading um, reading what uh Masters at School Committee Association proposed with this language, or um really their guidance with this language, um, I I believe that it is almost implied that the chair, you know, is able to do that, right? And I know that we didn't put that in this clause, like where, you know, the chair has discretion to, uh, you know, to respond. Um, but the chair, you know, the chair always does have um discretion to respond. So Eileen, yeah, I agree with you. I and I think in those like rare cases, I think the chair would, you know, definitely, you know, definitely has a, you know, the, that that authority.
Yeah, okay.
Um, but I I understand, Stephen, where you're going at. You you think it's.
Oh, wait, is that then covered in number five, "All remarks will be at this discussion of the chairperson?"
I feel like that's about the people that are speaking.
Yes, correct.
Yeah, that is.
Correct.
So we we could soften the language
Mm-hmm.
and 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 kind of meet your expectation, Stephen, and let, and then that way it would be clear that that although we will not participate in dialogue, the chair, at the chair's discretion, they may interact with the speaker.
What was the sentence you wanted to add, Kevin?
The schoo- uh, the sentence that I wanted to add in the amendment, the proposed amendment, um, would say, "The school committee may address points of clarification as needed."
Oh, okay.
Right, uh, which does not respond to Stephen's um comment about the actual clause itself, number nine, uh, saying that the school committee will not engage in dialogue. Um, so I think Stephen's kind of a little bit, he's he's just questioning, I think, the s- the strictness maybe of that phrase.
It it is, and then is your amendment to say that the school committee can ask clarifying questions? Cause again, in general, it would normally be the the chairperson.
I agree.
True. Yes, but let's say that I didn't understand what the person said. I think with this clause, I would be able to have the chair recognize me and then ask the question of that person.
Yeah.
According to this phrase.
Can I give, I don't know.
Oh, yeah.
I'm just thinking, could you merge the two things with nine and say, "Well, it is not the practice of the school committee to engage in dialogue. There may be points of time, there may be situations where the chair uses discretion for points of clarification," or something, like kind of merge the two into that.
I like that.
Mm-hmm.
I can.
I like that, too.
Okay, so, so maybe it should read, "The school committee, instead of will not, does not engage in dialogue, but will give any remarks appropriate consideration." The chair does, the school committee chair will have discretion to address, to make comments and address points of clarification, something like that?
And the only point of clarification out of there is, we're just using the chairperson um to cover that person, cause it may not in fact be the school committee chairperson, like if you're not here and, say, Stephen's filling in.
So the school committee chair or designee?
The, it just says that chairperson, and we defined what.
It'd still be a chair of the meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
And I think the main point on number nine is to avoid any, um, any, if we engage in a dialogue about the topic.
Right.
Then we could be discussing something in violation of an open meeting law, because you're not allowed to discuss a topic that's not on the agenda. So it's not that if there's a heartfelt moment, you can't respond to somebody, but you just can't, you know, we can't discuss a topic that wasn't on the agenda, that's, we can only consider it for.
I know, there are school committees who do engage in dialogue, so.
Right, and we're also not deliberating. We're not deliberating on something. We're just asking for clarification. And the chair is is running the show. It's one person, right? We're not voting, deliberating, commenting, gee, I was interested in what Doug said, let's talk about it. That's not it, right? So the chair is, ha- has the discretion and and may ask for clarification um when necessary. Well, I, you know, what Kara said was simple and, you know.
She's writing it right now.
Yeah.
All right, do you wanna read it?
I can read it again if you'd like. "While it is not the practice of the school committee to engage in dialogue, there may be circumstances when the chair or his or her di- designee uses their discretion to seek points of clarification."
So we would, the motion would, if I understand this correctly, would change that number nine would become the language that that Kara has created.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
So.
So the motion is for this revised amendment.
As presented.
As presented.
Kara, I would just remove the gender reference.
Sure.
Just use the there.
Chair or designee.
Yeah, well, that, yeah, that works.
Absolutely.
It's a good point.
I'll send that to him.
Make the motion, do we need to make it again?
No, I think we might have to make it again. Any future discussion?
Are you okay with that?
On that language?
Yes. I just don't know if we're in the amendment still, or?
Yeah, I think we are.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, sorry, motion? So do we have to, we have to vote on the amendment, correct?
Mm-hmm.
By itself?
There's a motion on the table. You can withdraw it. You made a motion already that was seconded.
That's this.
Right, so, but that that's this amendment right now.
Yeah. We have two motions on the table.
Right, but first we have to get the amendment voted, correct?
And then we can approve everything else.
You could pull the original motion and just reword it to say, "Approve policy as amended."
Yeah.
Right?
Okay, so withdraw.
The amendment.
The amendment, motion.
Okay.
And now I will make a new motion.
Yeah.
Brand-new motion.
Don't, don't we have to withdraw the original?
And this brand-new motion is to move that the school committee approve policy 217, public participation with the addition of the amendment that we just discussed as presented.
Second.
Okay.
With the following amendment?
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
Any discussion?
Oh, you're still going? All right. Is there any discussion on the amended policy 217? And we will get the exact language to Judy, so it will be in the meeting notes. Yes. Does that work? Okay, so a motion's been made and seconded, we've discussed. Any more comments? No? Can we do a roll call vote, Judy? Thank you.
Mr. Ingles?
Yes.
Mr. Fontanella?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Fiscadlo?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Ms. Collin?
Yes.
Uh, anything else for Policy and Communications?
Nope, that is it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Liaison reports. Does anyone have a liaison report they'd like to share? Um, the next Sustainability Committee meeting is actually this Thursday, August 10th. I will not be able to attend, cause I will be at Suesical the Musical. But I will reach out to the committee and see if there's anything they'd like me to share for our next meeting. Our next school committee meeting is Tuesday, August 22nd at seven o'clock, and that will be after our retreat, which is four to seven. Is there anyone on the committee, oh, is there anything that anyone would like added to the agenda other than a headcount report? Oh, it's gonna be a quick meeting.
Oh, could we, um, could we ask for an update on how the, um, it's not acceleration, but the the summer program for the the kids who were doing the extra algebra?
Oh, the Algebra Leap program?
Oh, we could actually have some students come in.
See if you can find them.
Yes, we could.
In August or September? Actually, next month, September. Are you talking about the August 22nd meeting?
Some parent stories about that. I'd be interested from an educator, like, to get, to see the numbers on it, cause it seems like it did fairly well.
We could get that.
So this is the August 22nd meeting?
Yes, Algebra Leap update. Does any school committee member have any comments before we adjourn? Go ahead, Pete.
Uh, for anyone watching at home, the Wakefield Educational Foundation, or WEF as we call them, is beginning to start their calendar sales, and right now they're doing it online. And you'll be able to pick those calendars up in hopefully mid-August, but if not late August, at all the school main offices. And that will be for $20. They'll also have them available at a bunch of local retail establishments in Wakefield. I know Hartz Hardware will have them, Wakefield Cooperative Bank, the Savings Bank in the center, and I know the Savings Bank in Greenwood, as well as Honeydew by the Lake. And for those not familiar with WEF, they've been an amazing partner to both the district and the P T Os to help fund different types of enrichment programs and other types of programming that's not funded via our local budget. Additionally, they brought back the six-day calendar for the Galvin, so that helps families who don't wanna just try to remember, is it day one, or day two, or day six? And so I would recommend when those go on sale, uh, at the various establishments that you go pick them up, they are available by cash or check as well.
It's a great calendar. It's all artwork.
Oh, and that's a great point, Amy. The artwork is all from W P S students.
Yeah.
So a lot of you will find your students' artwork on pages throughout the calendar.
Thank you. Any other comments? Oh.
Um, yep, I just wanted to share that, um, on August 19th, uh, Meiko is hosting a Meiko Family Fun Day in Dorchester. Um, it's August 19th, 12 to 4 P M. at Garvey Park. Um, and so it's, it's not just for Meiko families, it's also, you know, for for host families and and others who might be interested. So, uh, August 19th, uh, two to four, Garvey Park in Dorchester.
That's a Saturday, right?
Eight.
I'm sure it is.
Okay.
It is.
It is.
Uh, did someone else raise their hand on it? Yes.
Um, yeah, I just wanna say I'm very, very pleased uh that the state of Massachusetts um has decided to uh provide free uh meals to all public schools um in the, in the Commonwealth. And um I'm just, I'm very pleased that uh that happened. So thanks to our local state reps and senators and, yeah, very happy about that.
And not just for next year, it's permanent.
Yes.
Pretty incredible.
Yes, funded lunches.
Funded lunch. I, I was gonna, I was gonna say, Amy, for you.
Such thing as a free lunch. And I also saw, um, or I heard somewhere about, is there a bill for MCAS not to be graduation requirement? What is?
Correct. Correct. Um, it's part of the M T A's legislative priorities, uh, or one of their legislative priorities is to um, to take MCAS off the table for it to be a competency determination for high school. And so it would still be a requirement per the federal regulations.
Yeah.
But in regard to having it be um a competency determination to graduate from high school in Massachusetts, they are seeking to have that removed, correct? So additionally, in regard to the budget, Kevin, that Kevin just brought up, um, the budget also i- is has increases our local Chapter 70 budget, which goes to the town by the, to the, to the tune of $700,000. And so several other um increases in local aid has, have happened as well. It's gonna include, you know, improving the bandstand, and there's a, there's a breakout. And so Kate Lippert-Garabedian sent a summary of that around today. And so, um, so Wakefield is, is, you know, it's, we, we can use every penny that we get, you know, and and so. Um, so it's, it's a, it's, you know, welcomed. So, thank you for your comments in that area, Kevin.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Oh, I didn't make it.
Oh, I thought you were making it.
Move that the school committee adjourn its meeting of Tuesday, August 8th, 2023.
Second.
A motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote?
Mr. Ingles?
Yes.
Mr. Fontanella?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Fiscadlo?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Ms. Collin?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
I don't know what happened if I voted.
Yeah.